Who can rise, please rise for the Pledge of Legions?
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, so we're actually starting today with the superintendent's update. Go ahead, Allison.
I have just a couple of updates and then I'm going to introduce some guest speakers. We're going to talk about-
Can you move the mic a little closer?
Yes, I have just a couple of updates and then I have some guest speakers to introduce. We're going to talk a little bit about travel, which is sort of travel night. I don't know if you noticed in the agenda, got a big emphasis tonight. So to start with, I got this email that was just the most heartwarming thing. And I wanted to share what had happened, the story of it with you. And I'll just read the email. It said, Dear Superintendent Borchers, are you ready for some wonderful news? Hastings School students are learning to be active members of their community. This past week, my mother-in-law celebrated her 102nd birthday. She lives in the Willows across the street from the elementary school. After raising her six sons in town, she began a career in helping students read at the Hastings Elementary School the year that it opened. She loved the students and teachers at the school and worked there for 20 to 25 years. I wrote to Principal Degada regarding mom's birthday, and she arranged that third graders would write letters and cards for Fern Aileen Imsey for her birthday on Tuesday. We opened the beautiful folder of letters, which included personal stories, drawings, and math extension activities around her age of 102. The teacher, Ms. Nicolazza, worked with all the students, providing them with the structure to write meaningful letters. I'd given the principal some stories about Fern. She was an active community leader as a public library trustee, Sunday school teacher, president of the garden club, and a volunteer teacher for ESL classes in addition to her work at Hastings. This was such an amazing collaboration for the school and the elderly. The students truly celebrated the work that Fern had done for others. I'm proud to have graduated from the Westboro Schools as a neighbor and Fern and her daughter-in-law. I recently retired as an educator and administrator in Connecticut after 42 years, thanks to the Hastings School administrator, teacher, and the glorious students. And so some photos there, you can kind of see the celebration that took place. So that one felt like it tugged at my heartstrings. I wanted to make sure I shared that along with you. Next, just highlighting a couple fun events in the arts that I was able to attend. And I saw Yakub at the art show last night. But in addition, a few weeks back, Honor Society had their art, Honor Society induction ceremony. It was an incredible ceremony, it was very moving. And the student president who spoke was very, very insightful and thoughtful about kind of the role of art in education and how important it is for students. So I was just blown away by both the work itself and the students and their poise. So I wanted to kind of give a shout out there. I also had the chance to go to DECA last night for their end-of-the-year acknowledgements. I don't have any good photos from that because my photography skills are kind of terrible, but I'm hoping to have some I can share with you next time. And then I wanted to give you, in the less sort of happy news update, I guess, just a little snapshot of where things are at the federal and state level around budget. And I'll keep this brief. At the federal level, on the first of the month, the president released a kind of proposed budget. It's being described as sort of a skinny budget for the Education Department in particular. And a couple of highlights I can share with you. And important to note, two things. One is that the federal kind of budget dollars run from October 1st to September 30th. So it's a kind of calendar that's off of where everything else is. So that's kind of important to keep in the back of your mind. Secondly, that in the recent years at least, the president releases a budget and then that budget is largely ignored by Congress. And I don't know if that will continue or not at the federal level. It really remains to be seen. But in terms of K-12 education, the U.S. Department of Education is slated for a major, major cut of 15.3%. The proposed budget, as it stands, consolidates a lot of different competitive grants and funding programs into a single grant that would be funded at about $2 billion nationally, which represents a net cut of about $4 billion from those combined levels back in FY25. The proposal does indicate that Title I funding would remain intact. Title I is the funding that goes to support education for lower-income students. And it is a funding source for some of our students in school programs. The proposal preserves all IDEA grant funds. Those are special education grants, but consolidates them into a single program that's level-funded from FY25. And then there are some proposed cuts to Title III and teacher-quality partnership programs. Those are grants that usually go to support things like professional development in the district. So it's too early to know what all of it means, but I wanted to sort of pass along an update that that is a situation that we're watching carefully. Likely, the impact wouldn't be felt until the 26, 27 school year. So it's a thing we'll start talking about and I will kind of keep on the radar as we go into the fall and do budget development, looking ahead to the FY27 budget. Okay. On the state front-
Excuse me, can I ask you a question about that? Could you explain that figure, the 12.5? Is that, that's the projected aid, I mean money coming from the state to Westboro?
The 12.5, Chapter 70, that was the governor's proposed budget number for Chapter 70. So that is at the state level. I haven't gotten there yet. The state, where we are in the state, the governor released her budget. The House did a version, the Senate did a version, and now they're all in reconciliation. And that debate really gets sorted out next week. Tim can correct me if I'm off-base about that. But my understanding is it all, you know, comes to a head next week. That's the number that we had in terms of the governor's budget, which is up slightly from FY25, certainly not enough to cover our kind of general cost of increase for schools. The House proposed, in Massachusetts, then a slightly higher number, the Senate, lower than the House. And there's also a lot of conversation swirling around about circuit breaker reimbursement. I put here that MAS, the State Superintendents Association, is advocating very strenuously for two proposals that are amendments to the Senate budget, one that increases circuit breaker reimbursement significantly, and the other that creates a commission to study Chapter 70 formula creation in the hopes that that formula will do a better job keeping up with the rising costs of education.
So it's only 12.5 million, that's it?
Yes.
Not too much.
No, it's not. It, you know, most of how education is funded here is here, right here locally, for a community like Westboro.
Thank you.
Yeah, no problem. And I'll continue to kind of provide these updates as they are coming toward me and make sure we're continuing to think about them in terms of budget development for next year. And I think at this point, I'm going to hold on this and have our guests go first because this next topic is a little bit more involved. But I wanted to introduce Bobby Sullivan, who's going to introduce other folks. And Mr. Sullivan is our Director of World Languages. And we have a whole bunch of folks who are going to be here talking about field trips today. So, and travel, and student travel.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. I'm happy to be here. Superintendent Borchers, did you want to speak about the Indiana trip first?
I'll tackle that at the end because I think there's nobody here. So I want to get to you folks who are here first.
Okay. First up, we're gonna, Ms. Chaves is gonna have, come up and speak about her, share some highlights about her Belize trip in February of 2025 and present to you a proposal to vote on later in the meeting for Galapagos 2027. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for having us. So one of my current students, Willow, she traveled with me to Belize. Unfortunately, she's sick today, but her mom joins us today, which is so great. So we're going to talk to you about our trip to Belize in February, which was just incredible. We took 10 awesome students from the high school, four of which are either my current or former students. So that was really fun to foster relationships with them outside of the classroom. And so just show you some pictures here. So these are just some highlights from the trip. So one thing I want to point out is that in the bottom picture, that is obviously more than 10 students. So we, because we were a small group, we were combined with Wellesley High School. And that was really, really fun. I was really impressed with how well the students just really meshed with the other high school. And it was remarkable, so much so that the other tour guides and researchers that we met, they were like, oh, is this just one school? And we were like, no, actually, we're two different schools. So I was really impressed with how the students just immediately made friends and just worked with students who they weren't familiar with. And so I think that speaks really well to the community feel and the values and the respect that our students are being taught and are showing outside of the classroom. And so what you see here are different pictures in Belize. So it was a STEM tour and it was very, very busy. I'm sure Willow shared with you all the things that we did. But the top picture is a bat. And so one of the nights, we were running through the rainforest, capturing and releasing bats. And so those bats were measured and we were taking data. And the scientists are using those data and bringing it back to their university in Michigan. And they were telling us what they were doing with that data. We were zip lining. That was the first day. That was a really good start. We planted over 75 trees in a reforestation project. We snorkelled two different days, different locations. We dissected lionfish, which are an invasive species in Belize. And then that picture is a cocoa, cocoa fruit. So if you can take those out and you can eat the white part, which is kind of sweet, and then the actual cocoa part is very, very bitter. It's 100% chocolate, so very bitter. And then you can grind it down at the top part. And they showed us how to make chocolate. And so beyond the science immersion, there was a lot of cultural immersion as well. We were working directly in the Mayan villages. We were taught different dances and singing their songs. The students were just, were just in love with that. And I was, I was really impressed with them. And so I was so happy that I did it. It was, it was really great. Would you like to share something that Willow said?
Yes. So Willow is home with a sore throat, a really bad one. But she texted me what she had planned to say. And she said, "It was really neat to get hands-on nature and animal experience. It made me realize that I might want to pursue something environmental or animal-related in the future. But mostly, the best part was the friends I made and how it was just a really fun experience, being able to travel with other students and bond with them while seeing really cool places that I normally wouldn't get the chance to visit." So she is 14 and she, this is her first international trip. She did not know any students who were going. And she had the absolute best time. She, I don't know if you know this, but a couple of months ago, a group of students from Westboro High School who went on the Belize trip went down to Wellesley High School together to watch one of the students in an acapella show. So they kind of like made a little trip together to go support somebody that they met in this group. And this summer, she is doing a camp at the Southwick Zoo so that she can learn more about animal-related sciences. It was, it was really a wonderful experience.
Thank you, thank you for sharing. Yeah, so even though we were traveling internationally and the purpose was initially to explore science in another country, a totally different ecosystem, there clearly is inherent value that has been brought back, back home, which I think is truly wonderful. So this, as soon as I got back, I was like, I gotta do another one. I gotta get more students to, to experience this. So I would like to share what I'm proposing for in another trip in February 2027. So I'm trying to get the ball rolling a little bit earlier this time. Hopefully, more than 10 students will be able to, to get involved. And the Galapagos is a location that has historically been very popular for Westboro. I myself have not gone to the Galapagos with Westboro, but I know that many students, this is very popular for them. And it makes sense because in 10th grade in biology, we teach students about the Galapagos. And we talk about Charles Darwin and how his research there inspired the theory of evolution. And so it is a location that the students can take what they've learned in the classroom and actually see and walk where Charles Darwin walked. And so what we'll be doing is investigating a lot of the same things that he investigated, looking at the wildlife, which a lot of it is endemic, which means that it's native to the Galapagos. So more than half of the species there, you can't find anywhere else. And so that's just a really cool location to see. And we'll also be looking at how the islands were formed. And so what I really like about the EF trips is that as soon as you get there, they, you're paired up with the tour guide, or tour director, I should say. And they're with you 24/7 and they're a local expert, like they live there. And so anything you need, any questions that you have, they would just want to share everything about their, their culture in this place with you. And beyond that, any activity or exploration that you do, you're also paired with a scientist or something like that, whatever the activity is. And so they're sharing their knowledge with you. So it's really, the emphasis is on learning. And I think in the Galapagos, what is amazing about this place is that they're focused on sustainable travel. And so when we go there, it will really be minimal impact to the environment. And that's a really important thing for students to, to learn also. And this is a nine-day trip. And so it will be happening during February break. So hopefully, the days will align so that we don't miss any school days. But I think that this will be very popular. And the students, you know, in bio, I've shown videos of Darwin and the finches, but it, there's, you can't, you know, compare that to, to actually seeing it in, in real life. I recently met up with a teacher from Northbridge, who just came back from the Galapagos with a group of students. And she just could not talk more about like how amazing this trip was. And she said her students were just in love with the location. They just learned so much, they were taking it all in. She said it was just a once-in-a-lifetime experience. The wildlife, learning about how the islands were formed. There's a chain of volcanic islands, if you're unfamiliar with the location. And so they're talking about the geologic formation as well. And she said it, it really is just incredible. So I hope that students will take this opportunity. I think it really is advantageous for their learning and just experiencing outside of the classroom. And so I think this will be great.
Thank you, thank you so much for coming and presenting. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I do.
Go ahead.
Hi, thank you for the presentation. I have two questions about your trip and then one question about the new trip. Do you have any unexpected adventures on your trip?
Unexpected what?
Adventures on your trip to Belize.
Unexpected adventures, like-
Like something happened? I don't know. There was a, I mean, you lost something. And I always feel like every trip has some kind of a story to it.
No, we didn't lose anybody. I just want to be, just want to be clear.
That's good.
No, everything went really well. You know, there's some minor medical things. One thing that we did realize is that when we went there, they have a lot of different insects that we don't have here. So I know I experienced this, is that the bugs, like, were just like, you know, new blood. So we, you know, our ankles were swelling up, you know, legs were swelling up. And so we went to the tour director and we were like, what do we do? We're so itchy. And so he said, well, grab some vinegar, soak vinegar on the paper towel, rub it around your leg, the vinegar will soak out, you know, the venom. And that seemed to help. So, you know, just little things like that, but really, I have no, I have no complaints.
That's good. Which experience do you think was most valuable from an educational perspective that you couldn't have here locally?
In Belize specifically? I would say with the, probably the day that we were spending in the Mayan village, when we were, when we were walking through the rainforest, looking at the cocoa trees, and we were actually taking the chocolate, like, from the bean, grinding it down. And then they were showing us all through the process. And then we actually got to sample, like, chocolate truffles. And I'm telling you, that was the best chocolate I've ever had. You know, that's just an environment that we don't have here. And the tools that they're using, it's not something that, you know, maybe we would see here in, you know, an industrialized factory. But I was, I was really amazed with their, their sustainable farming. They build their farms into the land. So you're walking through the mountains and you're just seeing these cocoa trees. Whereas here, you go to a large farm and it's just flattened-out land. And so the land is cultivated for the farm. Whereas here, we're trying, or in Belize, we're trying not to disturb the land. And so I thought that that approach was really interesting and they were talking about that also. And I think just opening students' eyes to how things can be different and why that might be better than how we do it here, I think is very valuable.
Wonderful, thank you. And just one question about the Galapagos trip. Are you going to be going to different islands? Because I know there's, you know, a lot of diversity that you can see with your own eyes if you go to different islands in the archipelago.
Yes, so it's a very busy itinerary. I believe that we don't stay in the same hotel for more than one night. So we're hopping to different islands. But because the islands make a concerted effort to keep themselves isolated because they don't want any cross-contamination between the islands, you have to have, like, your bags checked and searched through as you're moving, like, between the islands. So we will be hopping between, I think, three different islands.
I think it's a great opportunity from the biology perspective. I think it's great. Thank you.
Sure. Hi, thank you for your presentation. Just one question. I'm curious, you're talking about, obviously, going back to the Galapagos in 2027. Just from my time in Westboro High School, I remember that being the big trip that everyone was excited about. So I'm just curious, was there a reason that Belize was selected over the Galapagos for this time around? Or-
For the tour I did this past year?
Yes.
I, it was the first tour that I was leading. And I was looking for specifically a STEM tour. I knew that the Galapagos would, if I started with that one, I knew that that might be very, very popular. So I thought that maybe I would start with something different. And leading up to the Galapagos, I'm anticipating there will be a lot of students. And so now that I have done one tour successfully, loved it, I'm ready to take on something that will be probably a little bit larger.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have one quick question. So I think it's great that you guys were able to be paired with the Wellesley students. So how did that happen? Was that something that you were made aware of before you went? Or when you got there, you just found out that you're going to be with them in one tour?
Because we were a small group, EF tries to, you know, minimize, I guess, maximize their, their space, right? So they, we found out a few months before we left that we were going to be paired with Wellesley. We knew we were going to be paired somehow within the year with another school. And then we found out that it was with Wellesley. And so I was able to reach out to the teacher there. And we were communicating and talking about, you know, the groups and everything. And it just so happened that we both had chosen the same tour.
That's great. That's a really great opportunity for the kids to meet one another and then build relationships.
It was fun.
That's great. Thank you so much. Appreciate you guys coming and sharing. And I hope your daughter feels better.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Want to vote now?
We can. She has it at the end. Is it going to be easier for you? I think that he's, do you prefer that we vote after each presentation? Or do you, is it fine for us to consolidate them and do it them again?
I'll defer to you all. The agenda has it at the end, but really, whatever the committee would prefer to do.
I think that it would be good if we could do them all in one fell swoop, just one vote for all of them. So unless people have some reservations about that, but go ahead.
Next up, I'm happy to introduce you to Ms. Jeanne LaPlatney, Spanish teacher, who is going to share some highlights from the Spain trip during April vacation. And she has brought two students along to share their firsthand experiences. Thank you.
Good evening. You guys can come right up. Me and my giant water bottle and my two students. As Bobby said, my name is Jeanne LaPlatney. I work in the Spanish, or the World Language Department, sorry, Bobby, as a Spanish teacher. And you guys approved this trip to Spain almost a year ago. It was in October. It was in October, two, excuse me, two years ago. So we went to Spain, I have a couple of notes here, and in April, in April vacation, obviously. And I went with nine wonderful students, almost the same size as Bree's trip. And we ended up going to five cities. Like Bree's trip, we were consolidated. So we had a school with us from Newfoundland and one from Saskatchewan, which was a really interesting experience too. Students were absolutely wonderful. They were polite, kind, cooperative and very intrepid. I'm going to share a little story. We went through passport control and they had me bring all the students passports up at once as the group leader. And so the, this pass, you guys don't really know that this was what happened. The passport control person says to me, oh, are you the teacher? Are they coming from high school? And I said, yes, they are. I said, they're all Spanish students. They all speak very good Spanish. And then she proceeded to interview each of them in Spanish. It's like a lesson. And so each got us individual question. They were all different questions and they did great. They were just like, okay, yeah, this is what I'm saying. This is what happened. And then she wanted to give me tourism advice on the way out. And I'm like, I've got nine kids waiting for me over there. But um, yeah, they were great. And so I asked the students to come present about their trip. And this is Jaira Phillips on my far left and Chloe Flynn. And they're both sophomores. They're both in Spanish three honors. Like I said, they speak very well. And they are going to, I had asked them if they could think of some photos or share things about what they learned, what they were curious about, what made them curious and or what they resonated with on the trip. So I will let them go ahead and speak.
So we'll start with the Reyna Sofia Museum. We went on this, I think it was maybe like our second day, our second full day there. And I thought it was really cool because I just like really appreciated the, like how they connected the art in the museum to history and like Spanish culture. So I, I didn't actually take these pictures. I have them, but these are better, the internet ones. So I included two pieces that I saw that I thought were really important and like I remembered really well. One of them is called Un Mundo and it was made by a girl, I think she was 18 years old in 1929. And it's, I thought it was really interesting because it looks like very futuristic, like you wouldn't actually imagine that to be made in 1929. But the cube in the middle shows three like parts, aspects of her life. And all of them are like take places in Madrid where this museum is. And the second one is Granica and it's a, by, it's by Picasso in 1937. And it was made during the Spanish Civil War. And they showed like what the different people represent on it. And the, the entire painting is like a symbol for like anti-war. And I thought it was really interesting to hear about like how they influenced Spain and how they're still relevant today. The next one was the Cathedral of Seville. And so this was our second city when, when we went to Seville. And I thought that this was just so beautiful. Like I tried to take pictures and I took the one, I took the first two. But like I, at one, at some point I was just like, oh, I just need to put my phone down because it's actually, the pictures just did not capture how beautiful it was. And the, if you, the picture on the far right, that's Columbus's grave, which is, I thought that was really interesting that he was just buried in this cathedral. And if you see the building, the, the year at the top, it shows that the cathedral was being built for over a hundred years. And honestly, I was surprised because if you look at the details, it's like, you could think that it was like being built for millennia because it was just so like well-built and everything, like every detail was just so interesting to look at. I could have stayed in there for like the entire day and just kept looking around. They also had these like different parts, like different areas on the, like everywhere you looked, there was like a different area that people could worship. It wasn't just one place. So I think it was really cool to see like how this was a big like part of the community and like the, it really emphasized the role of religion in Spain, specifically Seville.
So one of the other places that we visited was St. Michael's Cave. And we had the opportunity to visit the monkeys that the government actually takes care of themselves. And we ended up driving up this mountain that was pretty hard to get up because they typically did cable cars, but cable cars tend to get stuck. And so they would have to send the bus to go up the mountain anyways. So we decided to go on the bus and we had an amazing tour guide who was so sweet. And he took us up the cave. We saw the mountains and we were able to go through all of the cave. And we saw these lights that represented a lot of like the changes throughout the time in the cave and the angels. And it was just a generally, like it was such a beautiful experience. And overall, being in Spain, we had a very small group. So we were grouped with two schools from Canada. And generally like though it would have been an amazing experience to be with more students from our school, it was amazing to be able to get to know other people, even though we didn't spend much time in a large group. We did break off a lot to individual groups. It was amazing to be able to enhance our relationship with kids within our school that we didn't typically interact with. But we also got to know people from other schools, which was an opportunity that not many people get to have, especially from other countries. And to be able to enhance our Spanish speaking in another way besides just in the classroom or among our friends, it was absolutely amazing. And to be able to like speak with people who like have Spanish as their first language or to be able to apply it, even if it's just asking for water in a restaurant, it was an amazing opportunity.
Do we have any, thank you for presenting. Do we have any comments or questions?
Just one. Thank you. It looks like you had a wonderful trip. I'm just curious, I mean, it's a question to all three of you, I guess. I don't speak Spanish, but I know Spanish comes in different flavors. And I, I wonder how, you know, how did you manage with this, with the local Spanish, you know, compared to the Spanish that you learned in school? I imagine there can be differences.
Well, yeah, it was kind of, it was a mix of things because sometimes people will notice like a local, I'll try to talk to them in Spanish, you know, and then they would be like, yeah, I'm better English than you are at Spanish. And then they would start speaking English to me. But sometimes, sometimes I felt really special because I thought like they, they actually needed me to speak Spanish to them. And so an example of one was when we went, like it was, we went to this restaurant, it was like a cafe place. And I, I started explaining like that we needed a straw and I like got, but I didn't know the word straw. So I, I just acted out like drinking a straw and like things like that. We were just able to kind of like, even if we're, it's not like one word in the same language, like there's a mutual understanding of things. So with our knowledge of sandwich, Spanish that we have right now, we were able to kind of get by.
Great. You passed a test. Thank you.
Just one question. I know that you're all talking about how you got the opportunity to speak with people in Spanish and, you know, just kind of as you were living your life there. I am curious, were there any specific exercises to go out and try to engage people in Spanish and talk to them in their native language?
So originally the trip was planned to be an immersion trip and it was only going to be Spanish students. And we did not get enough students for that. So we did have students who were very high level Spanish. We also had students that had lower level and were not able to do things like that. And then on top of that, the schools we were with, those students actually weren't Spanish students, so our students were. So we had, had the immersion trip and we got what they call consolidated, like Bree's trip. And so we ended up with students on a trip that was not immersion. So I would speak Spanish to the students, I'd say like about half the time, but we didn't do a particular like, oh, there actually was a scavenger hunt. Was that in English or Spanish? I think it was in Spanish, yeah. So they did provide that to the students too. But yeah, so there were some constraints around that unfortunately.
But just hearing, our tour guide would sometimes talk to us in Spanish and like just specifically us, cause like we knew it. And that would, that helped us like a lot.
And I just want to reassure the ladies and tell you all that they are not better, not worse at Spanish than they were at English. It's just that the people who are working in tourism know the words for things in their particular thing. Trust me, you speak better than they do.
So in 1998, I went on this trip with Senora Pisha from the high school. That was, I think, the most memorable trip. So I sort of did what you guys did. We went from, we also went to Morocco on that trip. So we went from Costa del Sol and took a ferry over, which was also an amazing experience. I do find, and I took my kids back last, like two years ago when we did the South of Spain. And I found that in all the travels that we do, the dialect is actually extremely similar in, in Maine, so like in Madrid and some of the southern Spain cities, they have, you can, they can really understand what you're saying, the taxi drivers and things like that. Whereas if you go, like we went to Portugal and people speak a lot of Spanish there as well as Portuguese, but they speak Spanish, it's very different. The dialect is different. You go to Mexico, the dialect is different. So everybody speaks a little bit differently, but I did find that in Spain, I don't know if you guys, but it sounds like you did. It sounds like you were able to communicate with them, which is, which is great. And everyone there is so friendly. So I'm sure they were more than willing to try and understand what you were saying, even if they didn't. So thank you so much for sharing. Really, really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello again. This is my last time coming up, I promise. Now I am happy to present to you some highlights from the Quebec trip. So it's just, Dr. Mayer, it's just one click to the left. Yeah, perfect. So I led a trip to Quebec City in Montreal during April vacation. And I am happy to invite to the table, two of the fabulous students who traveled on this trip, Jenna Wiegansberg and Will Johnston. So very similar to Mrs. La Platine's trip, this was not a STEM trip. This was a cultural and linguistic discovery trip with cultural connections to many content areas, notably history, fine arts, and of course, world language. So these students are going to share some highlights with you and also talk about a little bit of the team building experience with a diverse set of Westboro peers. Thank you.
So one of the first things that we did was we obviously had a very, very long bus ride, but we then got a short tour of Quebec, which was so pretty. And we were just walking along the streets and it was just, it was so different and it was so nice to see something that was so different because there was barely any cars and people were just walking all over the streets. And it was, it's, it was just so, it wasn't just different. It was also nice and it was quiet and it was peaceful and it was just so pretty. And it was so nice to see something that was so different from all of the cities that are just like here that I've been to.
So on our second day, we went to Cirque du Soleil and they taught us traditional like circus skills. So we learned how to unicycle, juggle, trapeze, tightrope. And that was really cool. And they put on a performance for us. And then we got to watch the actual circus performers practice on their own, which was really cool. All very comfortable in their craft. After that, we went to the falls, the waterfall. We got to go up on a cable car and walk across it. It was a very neat experience. It was very pretty, beautiful. Fortunately, we weren't able to walk down because it was frozen, but it was just surreal like how large it was and how, how like part of nature it was and how that came to be. And then after that, for dinner, we went to the Sugar Shack where we learned where maple's how and where maple syrup is made, which is really neat process to learn. They showed, told us the history about it. And they showed us like how, what an original Sugar Shack looked like, you know, first building dedicated to this creation of maple syrup. That was really neat. And we got traditional lumberjack dinner and that was a really neat experience.
On the third day, we did half in Quebec, half in Montreal. So in the morning, we went to the citadel, which was so pretty. And it was so cool to see, it was an alive base. So we saw people in the military just walking around. It was also cool because I can compare it to what we're learning in history right now, which we're learning about the French Revolution. And they talk about how they were preparing for an American attack that ended up never coming. And it was cool to see all the cannons there. And it was so pretty because it views right over like a river and you could just see the city. It's just so pretty. And then we had some free time, so we got to explore a little bit. And we went, and then we obviously went to Montreal and we saw some of old Montreal. We saw this giant Ferris wheel, which was so fun to go on. And we went, I think, three times, even though we thought we'd only go once. And it was just, it was so pretty there too. And it was so cool to see, compare Quebec and Montreal. And even though it's obvious, they're both in Canada, there, there was just two different vibes from both the cities, which was also so different from here. And it was just so cool to see and compare those.
Yeah, to add on to that, it was really neat to be immersed in the history and view it from like a different perspective than we learn here in the States. You know, you gotta, you gotta see what they thought and how their reactions were. And our tour guides really explained that to us. The next day, we got to go to a biodome and it had a multiple different ecosystems. It had like an Arctic one, a tropical jungle environment and then like traditional Canadian ecosystem. You gotta see a whole bunch of different animals and their natural environment is really cool. Like there weren't many cages, they were just kind of roaming around where they could. After that, we got to play laser tag, which was really fun bonding experience with everyone on the trip. I think everyone became much better friends after that. Then after we got to go, did a ghost tour of old Monch, of old Montreal. And that was neat to see the personal history, not just like the overall, but personal stories that people went through. There were definitely tragedies to happen to people, but it was neat to see their own side of history and different things that came up in their lives.
And then on day five, it was really, really rainy and cold, but we still went on top of Mount Royale and it was still so pretty. And we could see the fog going over a bunch of the buildings, which was so cool. And we also got to, even like when we were walking up, it was cold and wet and we necessarily didn't want to be there because it was so cold and wet. But once we were up there, we were thankful that we were up there. And then we got back on the bus and we came home.
Before, to thank you both, Will and Jenna, I just wanted to say very briefly before I pass it over to you folks for any questions, that the, the image you see there on the right is an, a stock image from the internet, but it's from the citadel and it has Je Me Souviens, which is the motto of the French Canadian people. And it means, I will remember. And for them, it means they will remember the, the fight that they fought to preserve their language and culture against the, the British. But I think for the, the students, as you've heard, they will remember the, the experiences that they've shared with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or questions?
Yeah. Thank you for your report and the photos. Looks like you had a wonderful trip. I, I am very partial to Quebec. I, I think it's a beautiful city. Have you been to Europe before?
No, this was my first ever time traveling international. And I think this was a great opportunity and this school definitely makes it more accessible and it makes it easy to develop these traveling skills on your own. And I think it was very, my, I'm very happy with my first time going internationally out of the country.
To add to that, I've been out of the country quite a few times, but never anywhere like Europe. I usually go someplace like tropical where it's nice and hot, but I loved it, like a different type of vacation, a different type of experience where I got to see not just a different culture, but I got to see like new history. And I take French, so I was able to understand more and be able to fully appreciate the language.
I think Quebec offers, Quebec City offers that flavor of European cities more than Montreal. It has that, you know, the feel on the small narrow streets. I like it a lot. But I'm wondering about your French. I don't speak French, but I do have some French friends and they, they always chuckle a little bit when they hear the, the French Canadian accent. It's a little bit, I think it, it feels outdated to them. Emma, what was your impression of the French they speak there?
So it was definitely a little bit different from what I've been learning in school. And I would say it's, it was definitely words that I wasn't able to pick up on, but I'm able to pick up on like the full idea of what they were saying. So I wouldn't say it's completely different, but it is different in a, a bunch of senses.
So were you able to communicate with just French?
Depended on the situation. So I could order my McDonald's order in French or when we went to the mall and someone was like, oh, do you need help with this? I could respond like, no, I'm all set. Or like if I needed like the dressing room, I could be like that. But if I was just talking to a native, I don't think that I'd be able to keep up with them.
Sure. I'm sure they appreciate the efforts. Thank you. Great trip.
Thank you so much. Thanks for presenting, guys. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
Well, I was just gonna, I think that you just answered it, but I was just gonna ask the, the question I had before, which was if there was any, you know, specific times assigned for trying to engage locals in their native language.
Thank you. I just want to say for the, the viewers at home, that an analogy between a French person from France speaking with a person from Quebec would be like an Americans, speaking American English to a person from Scotland speaking Scottish English. But I wanted to ask them a quick, quick question before they leave, because they took, they squeezed this in between sports and homework. If there is a parent at home, you know, with an eighth or ninth grade child who is considering sending their children to the Galapagos in 2027 or the France and Spain trip, what would you say to that parent?
I, I highly recommend it. It's a good way to make friends, but also get an experience out of your country and you get a different perspective on everything. You get to see how other people do it, like do it, like the cities are definitely very different. And though like the communities that you can tell they're just different, I think it's a great opportunity and I definitely recommend it to anybody.
Yeah, I agree. And I'd also like to say, it's also a completely different experience without your parents and that you're doing it with your friends and you're doing it with teachers. And it's just, you feel like you have a little bit more freedom and a little more space to like be curious and be like, oh, what's this? Like, I'm going to go explore like this later and I'm going to go to that place later. It's just like a little bit different without like your parents.
Everything's different without your parents, right?
Thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, guys.
Lastly, I'm going to invite Kate Shaw, a Spanish teacher at the high school, to, to join me upfront. So she and I are proposing to co-lead a trip to Spain and France. And before we share a couple of highlights from the itinerary, I wanted to briefly provide some reminders and context. So as Ms. LaPlatini said earlier, originally she had hoped to take a group of all Spanish students to Spain and then due to low enrollment, had to pivot and, and open it up to the full school. And several of you on the committee will remember that originally I had brought to you the idea of going to the French island of Guadeloupe, but then pivoted and went to Quebec. So what we're hoping is instead of having two trips, to, to have one and combine, have one world language trip as opposed to two. And also Jenna and Will, who just spoke so well and eloquently of, of the trip, they are in ninth and 10th grade, right? So they would be able to go to this France and Spain trip when they are juniors and seniors respectively. So we were sort of thinking of, you know, maybe having like an alternating every two years so that, you know, there would be one trip when students are freshmen and sophomores and another when they're juniors and, and seniors. So I'm going to pass it over to, to Ms. Shaw because in this trip, we would start in Barcelona and she's the Spain expert.
Thank you, Bobby. When Bobby approached me with this itinerary, I was really excited to see that it would start in Barcelona. I'm partial, of course, because the first place in Spain I ever visited was Barcelona. And it's not an understatement to say that it totally changed my life. So the first time that I visited Barcelona in 2001, one of our stops here on the, the tour is the Cathedral of the Sagrada Familia. And when I went in 2001, it was open to the sky. It was still very much under construction. And now it's one of the most beautiful cathedrals that I've ever seen. The cathedral in Seville is nice, but the Sagrada Familia is a whole other level. So after spending two days in Barcelona and getting over our jet lag, we will, oh yes, and see the Antony Gaudy architecture, which if you've never seen it before, is so unique and it's so quintessential Barcelona. It's very nature-inspired and colorful and it really helps you think outside the box of what architecture can be. I never thought architecture was like something cool until I saw the Gaudy things. And now I can see the possibilities. So after we have a couple of days in Barcelona, I actually requested to add the Salvador Dali Museum in Figueres, partially because it's a little bit off the beaten path. And I think in a student trip, it's really important to not only show them places that they want to come back to. Like Barcelona has levels and levels that you could visit many times and see, but it's also important to take them off the beaten path to places like this art museum that's kind of in the middle of nowhere, but it was designed by the artist himself. And he had designed it as a surrealist experience. So there's like a bathtub on the ceiling and there's like all sorts of wild things. It's a really, really cool experience. And then passing through that part of northern Spain into parts of southern France that I'm not familiar with and I'm very excited to see.
So the first place in southern France that we would visit is Caixasun. And here we're talking about southwestern France, you know, just on the other side of the Pyrenees Mountains. And one of the things that's really awesome about Caixasun is it is a medieval town that's sort of stuck in time. And what I mean by that, for the fairy-tale lovers, it is, you know, your typical chateau or castle with, you know, the moat and the drawbridge and the walled tail and that sort of thing. And they also have, you know, intact things, one, one-room schoolhouses, cobbler shops and, you know, other professions that were the popular at the time. So similar to what Ms. Chaves spoke of earlier, we, there's a lot of movement. And then in Avignon, we would go to the Pont d'Avignon. So if you go to the, the next page, please, Dr. Mayer, I'm sorry, go up to the top of page four. Here you can see the Pont d'Avignon, which is the, the bridge at the top there that is largely intact with, of course, you know, necessary code of engineering updates for the, you know, with the aqueducts. And also the, the Palais des Papes, which is not a pictures, but in the 14th century, it was the, the house of the popes and seven popes reigned there before moving to the, to the Vatican. And of course, we would start strong in Barcelona and end strong in Paris. So we would not return from the same city. And in Paris, we would do typical things such as a sand riverboat ride. Oh, I'm sorry, going to Versailles of, you know, Louis IV, the sun king and Marie Antoinette fame, when, you know, kings and aristocracy lived lavish lifestyles. And of course, bicycling through the gardens and of course, finishing with a riverboat ride and a visit to the, the top of the Eiffel Tower. And we were hoping to, pending your approval with the vote, launch the trip in September when the excitement for back to school is happening. And, and then have that first payment deadline due sometime in October. And I'll stop there and open it up to any clarifying questions that you might have.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
I have too.
Go ahead.
It sounds like an amazing trip. I, I like the, I mean, all the places are just so well-known, so famous. And there's a lot of history too. I'm wondering though, how, like, are you expecting to do half and half, French and Spanish students? Are you expecting them to help each other communicate locally?
I think so. I think, given the fact that we will be in two different countries, I think we're going to attract a mixed group of students who speak Spanish and who speak French. And when we start in Barcelona, we also add the Catalan in there. So we're, we're all going to be students of each other. We're going to work together and we're, we're going to figure it out. Yes.
It looks amazing.
And to that end, we're really excited, you know, with our national standards and state framework, really focusing in on certain skills like, you know, bringing in the community or bringing them to the target communities, opening their, the windows and mirrors and sliding glass doors into culture in a more immersive context. And certainly, you know, appreciating, you know, diversity and seeing the way, seeing and appreciating the way other people live and, and, you know, honoring their perspectives.
I guess my only other question is the company that's organizing it. I haven't, I don't recall this company before. Have you traveled with them before?
I have, yes. Have you traveled with them?
I have traveled to, well, I just traveled with Promitour to Quebec and also traveled with them also to, to France and Quebec in my previous district. And I would just be remiss to not echo the same comments that Ms. Chaves and Ms. LaPlatini say, which is, since this was my first time leading a trip in Westboro, how impressed I was with, with the students taking care of each other, even if they had never met, looking out for one another. And lastly, representing the, the town and the public schools very well.
Thank you.
And the, to your question about this tour company, one of the things I love about this tour company is that they have three international headquarters, one in Montreal, one in France and one in Spain. So it feels like they're in our own backyard should anything go wrong.
Yes. Not that it will. Nothing's going to go wrong.
No.
Just one question, playing off Yakub's question as well, just regarding the languages. I'm just curious, are you aware if historically at Westboro, we've done field trips where we combine two different languages like in this trip?
I can speak to a very successful field trip that the AP Spanish and AP French classes had this past November. We visited the Museum of Fine Arts and the, we did have separated groups where each AP class had a tour in their target language. But it, it worked out very well, even on the bus and stuff. The kids all get along really well and they all worked together. And have we done other combined language trips or?
We have for, for the Urban Art Unit.
Oh, that's right.
And French and Spanish for with similar when we went one time to the Urban Art Museum in, in Salem, Massachusetts. We also had two tour guides. And the thing that I would add to is having a co-leader who speaks Spanish and myself who speaks French. We're also going to have two different tour guides on the bus. One, a Spanish, native Spanish and Catalan speaker from Spain and then, and then, you know, a French person for the, the latter part of, of the trip.
Sure. And I guess, and I'm not sure, you know, if there's an exact classification system, but I guess, would this be considered a linguistic trip? Like are there going to be exercises, things like that for the students or because it's, you know, one is French and one is Spanish, that there won't be as much of a linguistic component?
Will there be a linguistic component or?
I, I would say similar to what Ms. LaPlatini said earlier, is that this is primarily a, a trip for cultural and linguistic discovery. And then of course, some of those social, emotional learning and diversity, equity and inclusion standards that we've already referred to. But as Prof. Shaw said, we're certainly going to try to find like small pockets and look for opportunities to, to satisfy the linguistic curiosity of those that want to practice, especially since, you know, she is the AP teacher and I also teach French five, but previously taught AP for senior year. So we know how important it is for our students that are preparing for the sealed Bible literacy and the AP to practice their language in a natural immersive context in preparation for those spring exams.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So I guess that just leaves the Indiana trip, right? If you want to do that, then we'll just do a vote.
That sounds great. Daniel, looking at that, can we, can you click on, I sent you a text about that. Can you click on the second, the link to the right? Which gives an overview, the trip overview one.
Let's see.
Thank you. So this is a trip that Nicole Miller has proposed to take. It's a, it's an interesting trip. It's just a single student who's going to be an ambassador for the Best Buddy program. So it's, it's sort of a training trip really. And it's, I can give you, in terms of the, the dates and particulars, it's actually a short trip in July, the 18th through the 21st. So really just one rising senior and an advisor. And they're going to Indiana University. And in the program that you see here, if you know about Best Buddies, it's, it's a program to promote inclusion in school districts. It's really about kind of helping students develop strategies to, to be kind of positive mentors and do outreach and really create a more inclusive environment for all students with all sorts of needs. So it's a, it's a great program. It's got a great reputation and it is a trip that has gone before, so.
Why is it only one student or is it not open to?
It's, it's sort of training for this student to be a leader and come back. So it's kind of like a train the trainer model. So this student goes, does this and then comes back and is involved in leadership of the program. And this is something that's been done in the past, from what I understand.
Wonderful. Any questions or comments?
Just have one quick question. Is it something that the student applied for and was selected or is this the student-driven and the teacher is, you know, allowing them to go and going along with them?
That is a great question and I can find out for you. I assume it's probably to do with a leadership position within the student activity or organization. I don't, I don't have that off the top of my head.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would suggest that we, somebody make a motion to just, you know, get the trips vote out of the way. We could do Indiana, Galapagos Islands, France and Spain for 2027. So those are, we've got France and Spain for 2027, Galapagos for 2027 and Indiana. So if somebody wants to make the motion, then we can.
Motion to approve the three trips?
Yeah, just.
Okay. The Best Buddies, Indiana University, Galapagos 2027 and France, Spain 2027.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion around that? All in favor? Okay, so that's 400. So those are all approved. And then I guess we can go back up and we would, that would put us at our annual stipend memo.
Thank you very much. And apologies, deep apologies. This didn't come to you for advance warning until this afternoon. And it's a little bit because of some, you know, disruption in my meeting schedule when we were meeting as a subcommittee. But I want to first of all acknowledge and thank the people who were involved in this, including Sarah and Jane. Thank you so much for being part of the discussion with the stipend subcommittee. And this is an annual task of, of kind of going through the set of stipends and making some decisions about additions, expansions or subtractions to the list of stipended activities. And it's an important task because when the school committee votes, these are essentially incorporated by vote into the contract so that for teachers, they count toward retirement and things like that. So it's kind of an important role that you play in making sure that we are able to, to kind of both honor teachers for the work that they do to support our students, to provide these kind of great activities and opportunities, but also sort of make it so it's pensionable for them, which is wonderful. A couple of things that came up and I'm reporting out based on what was reported to me from the, the notes of the committee is there was a vote to do a modest increase to the stipends, just 1% across the board. The, the feeling was the stipends are in pretty good shape and, but a slight adjustment for time and cost of living made sense. And that with that funding, with that slight increase, we could still keep the overall amount within our proposed budget. We'll be well inside the budget, especially because the group did some nice work identifying and removing some of those stipends that are really just not being used from the list. And I included that complete list in the memo. There was further conversation in, in the group about a couple of things, including looking at maybe restructuring how activity fees are, are pushed out for families with a particular attention. attention paid to activities that are sort of higher costs, that are sort of more resource intensive or involve a lot of travel. And I think that's a really important conversation to have. My recommendation is that that conversation happens as part of the budget conversation so that it's aired out fully in public. So it's not a thing that comes at families unexpectedly, but it's sort of incorporated into the larger budget discussion. But that's my recommendation to you going forward. That's kind of what I'm used to in past practice in, in the district that I come from. I think that level of transparency is appreciated and the, a little forewarning is appreciated too for families, especially with multiple children who may be impacted by any sudden change. And I think that's, I think that's, my broad strokes, every, two of you were there and have more intimate knowledge of that. So I'm curious if you have other thoughts or, or concerns or questions or anything you want me to kind of consider with this going forward.
Yeah, Jane?
Yeah. So first of all, this committee was so much more interesting than I thought it would be because it was just amazing to see all of the offerings that we have for the students and to understand the process of it more that any student who wants to start a club or activity can do so, as long as they can find an advisor. And so that's just an amazing opportunity we give our students. I was blown away by that. And there were a couple of things that we talked about that I just think, and I'm fine with thinking about it when we talk about the budget next year, but I think important for us to think about is the family cap on fees. We do have very reasonable fees in Westboro, especially compared to neighboring towns. And the family cap is something, you know, I think we could look at what the impact on the budget would be if we were to raise that slightly. And also, some of the activities that really have a high cost of, of transportation, which we're going to see later in our discussion tonight, you know, is such an impact on our budget, considering raising the fees just a little bit. I mean, it's not a huge increase. And the other thing that I think is wonderful about our district is that anyone who needs assistance with these fees gets the assistance with the fees. And so there is a process for families to, you know, go through if a change in fees were to be difficult. So I think those things were in discussion. And I was thinking, oh, stipend committee, what's this going to be? And it was really cool. So it was great.
Good. I'm glad you enjoyed that.
Yeah, so I'll echo what Jane had to say. I agree. There was discussion about both of those things. One was, what, what do we do about some of these clubs who, and activities that require a lot of travel? And I think that is something that we really should be looking at, just to be equitable across the board and ensure that everyone has access. And that's a piece of this too, is access to transportation is a challenge for everyone. We are all facing it. There are needs of certain clubs that require a lot more transportation than other clubs. So I think it's very, it's not unreasonable to then either tier the clubs according to their needs and then set an activity fee accordingly. Or something I had suggested, which I, I think would also be extremely transparent, would be to maybe have something called like a transportation fee, which would then potentially be added on to a club that requires that or on an as-needed basis. So that was discussed. We also talked about the family cap. And I think what's important to remember about that is that, you know, we're looking at the surrounding towns when we're doing that comparison. And it's important, and I think we should come back with some information and data that we can share with the public to say, hey, our surrounding towns have much higher activity fees. And, you know, we have been very hesitant for very legitimate reasons to not want to burden any of our families with these fees. On the other hand, it's, it's burdening us in other ways. And I think we have to distribute that in a way that's fair and be thoughtful about it. So I think that that's something that we should look at in the future. I also, you know, just wanted to point out that these, the strategic move to have, you know, remove some of these from the stipend list was done very thoughtfully. And it's actually, you know, doesn't prevent anyone from restarting any of these clubs. And they absolutely can be. So a student can come along and say, oh, you know, actually, I really loved Eastern Anime, and we want to bring that back. The whole purpose of removing these clubs was because there was no attendance. And so there was, you know, there was advisors that had repeatedly tried to get attendance to the club and kids were not coming. And so, you know, at that point, and they, you know, it was over an extended period of time. And so then the decision was made that if it's not running, then it should be taken off. And so that was the thought process behind that. But again, if anyone wanted to come back and say, no, we want to restart it, like I was sad about the knitting club, very honestly. But if somebody wants to restart the knitting club, be my guest. And I think that everyone will very much support anything that becomes successful amongst the student population. So it has to be student-driven and, you know, we're, we're all in support of that. So that's all I have to say. But if you have any comments or questions?
I do, yes. Thank you. What happens to the money that was set aside for a club that didn't run?
So in terms of the mechanism for how the clubs work, it's all, it goes into a single general student activity account. So it's not specific to the club. So it kind of goes into a pool and then goes back out that way.
So it's not being wasted?
No, no, it does not get wasted. Yeah. I assume if a student puts money toward an activity fee and then that activity doesn't run, we would, they, we would refund that. So we don't, we don't hold on to people's money if we don't run the service. So.
Thank you. The other question, I noticed three clubs or activities changed their names, but I don't see the old name. I'm just, I'm just curious, what prompted the name change?
I can speak to that a little bit.
Yeah, thank you.
So some of these were actually names, you know, we had, they had duplicate clubs and, you know, doing the same thing. And so the, the students themselves with the advisor made the decision to make a name change. I'm trying to remember one in particular, you know, that they wanted it to be more inclusive. And so they made a name change to, so that that would be conducive to their goals in the club. So that's my understanding around it. I don't think that there was any change per se, as far as the club itself. It was just a real, like a name change, I think.
Okay, I was just curious what it was before. And the last question I had was, so what does it take to start a club? Are the students aware of, of the process, you know, that they can start a new club?
I'd be curious. Reagan, are you?
The process is actually incredibly simple. I started a club my junior year. And all I did was, I like came up with the idea for it. And I just approached one of my teachers. And I was like, would you be willing to advise this? And then he said yes. And then from there, I think I emailed Mrs. McDermott. And she sends you a form and you fill out all the information so it can go on our Clubpedia website. So that also gives all the students access to see all the clubs that we offer to sign up for. So, and then I just created like a Google Classroom, invited my friends, and then I worked with my advisor to schedule meetings. So.
Good for you. Thank you.
And the really nice thing about, that I learned about starting a club is in the first two years, there's no fees to the students. So it really, there's this concerted effort by the district to get the clubs up and going. So they give the advisor a stipend still, and they don't charge the students. So they really try to get it to, you know, grow roots.
That's cool. Yeah. I think that there's some work that can be done around, to your question, in the lower grades. So like in the middle school and Mill Pond, in terms of trying to get the word out as to how a club is started and if you guys, if the kids want to do it. I definitely think that it's like a well-oiled machine over at the high school, almost too well-oiled to the, and I think that, you know, we really want to encourage the kids to be starting. And they've set a lot of guidelines around this now, which I think is great, is we want kids to, you know, pursue what their passions are or start a club and stay committed to that. What we don't want is juniors and seniors starting a club, you know, for their resume or for their college applications and then not being truly committed. So I think this is something that they face more at the high school level and less, obviously, in the lower grades. But I certainly think there's more work to be done around letting a lot of the teachers and the students at the lower grades, made, make them aware of how they can start a club and make it viable. So.
And I understand that those five rows here, the addition, they're exiting that two-year period. That's the Y2 pilot phase?
Yes.
Thank you.
I said one question, and Sarah, I believe you already addressed this in your remarks, but I just saw for the, in the stipends being removed, that there were three listed as advisor left. So it sounds like there weren't any students that were in those, those clubs. And it wasn't that the advisor left was the sole reason. But do we know, is there, is that ever an issue of students wanting to start a club and not being able to find a teacher to service their advisor?
I think some people have run into it, but I would say that would be mostly underclassmen because they haven't had the years in the high school to gain relationships with teachers. So the older you are, it's easier to know more teachers to ask. And also, some clubs can be a huge responsibility. So that can be hard to find teachers who are incredibly busy outside of school, too. But most people, I think, have been able to find advisors. So.
And I think they make it as accessible as possible. You can have a non-teacher being advisor as well. So the robotics club was run and still is, I believe, by a parent volunteer. And so if there was a child that really wanted to, I think that there would be, you know, and you should certainly go to your, to the administration and your building level to say, hey, listen, I really want to start this club. And I'm sure that they can be set up with somebody who would be willing to, to help there.
I do know, we have a number of, like, our math team, I think Beth Blumberg from the finance committee runs that debate, I think, has outside advisors. So that is an option for students to find a community member who's got a passion or an interest. And sometimes it's a nice thing to have somebody from outside the school, whether it's someone from a different school in the district or, or somebody within the community who's got a skill set that we may not be able to find in the school. So.
Absolutely. And I encourage that more even, again, when I talk about the lower level classes, because I don't think we have enough, and this is sort of an issue across the board, but parent volunteering and getting involved is sort of dropped off. And I think that it would be really helpful and could help to increase, you know, participation in clubs and making them really viable and really enrich the students with, you know, like the robotics club, I think a very dedicated parent has been involved and really has helped that club go to great heights. So we encourage that.
Okay, so I think we should probably also take that vote now because it's been, if anybody else has anything else to ask. Okay, does anyone want to make a motion on that?
I will move to approve the annual stipend memo.
Do you have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor? 4-0-0. And then that takes us to the financial update.
Great. And I had intended to put this on the agenda, I think, two meetings ago and went out of town unexpectedly. And, but I want to thank Anita for, who had it pulled together much earlier, but we wanted to get it in front of you before we send you the fourth quarter update when we get there to, I don't know if you have any comments or?
Thank you. Hi, thank you, everyone. We're finally in the home stretch of the fiscal year. Very excited about that. We're on track to close our fiscal year. Although we're not going to have a big surplus, the good thing is, is that we're not going to have a deficit, which I'm really happy about, which is really good. As you can see from the memo, we are running in the red for our special education, transportation, and tuition costs. But that, those costs will be offset by our circuit breaker allocation. This is also the time of year where we start to close out our larger purchase orders for utilities, printing, and any other large purchase orders that we take out. And we adjust the amount just to accommodate the last two months of the year. Finally, I just want to give a kudos shout out to our business office partners, Human Resource. They successfully enrolled 700 benefits-eligible employees within 22 days. As you know, the town changed benefit providers from Blue Cross to Harvard Polygram. And it was, there's only three of them. So I have to give them credit. They worked hard. We had, we had a lot of last-minute employees that we had to chase after to make sure that no one loses coverage. So I just wanted to give them credit for that because they were very successful in that. It's really good.
And, you know, that has saved the town like a tremendous amount of money and was a really critical part, I think, in the budget process and sort of getting us over that kind of final hill in, in the FY26 budget. So, you know, kudos to the Insurance Advisory Committee for kind of negotiating and doing that work. And absolutely, our Human Resources folks did a tremendous job, kind of turning on a dime. This was something that kind of came at them unexpectedly and they, they managed it really well. So.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions or comments around this?
I just have, I mean, some of the things, I don't totally know what they are. So some of my questions might be a little basic. So sorry about that. So what is district-wide, which is line 12? Is that like just a catch-all for?
So that basically has, there's a food services line on there for $40,000. There's, there's district-wide supplies are on there. So anything that applies to mostly like our lines as well, like our central office lines are on there.
Because it seems like, you know, it's like half of the budget wasn't spent. So that's great. And, you know, there were a couple of things like that where it was like a 50% surplus. And is that something that, did we have to make sacrifices for that? Or was it creative savings or?
So that was a combination, to be completely honest with you. So we had done a full analysis the first of the year. And we kind of knew we were trending in a very tricky situation. So we froze our spending pretty early on, just to make sure that we made it to the end of the year without any deficits.
You know, in, you know, one specific case, so a piece of that district-wide budget, this is just an example of the sort of thing we do periodically. We had a need around student support that came up earlier in the year and a request around student support that wasn't already in the budget. We saw this sort of $40,000 chunk that we didn't think we needed. So we held it to be able to reallocate over to salary. So things like that we do kind of on an as-needed basis. Because at the end of the day, like student support is the thing that is needed more than, you know, whatever, whatever we would do with that up there.
Yeah, that's great. And then just one more question. The, so earlier this year, before the town meeting, you had proposed a special ed reserve, right? So is that this, is this, you know, $450,000 special ed deficit, is that the sort of thing that it would go towards? Or how does that, would it help to alleviate that or?
So the reserve would be more for if we had an emergency, if we had completely depleted our circuit breaker allocation and our special education appropriation, we would go to that account in order to extract money, in order to pay for that.
Typically, an emergency would be kind of an unexpected constellation of circumstances where we had, you know, some extraordinary needs that came to us that we just weren't planning for. Most of the time, we're doing a pretty good job staying in front of the need and planning. But, you know, sometimes you don't, you don't know. You know, a student may be in a kind of crisis situation that we are unaware of. Or, you know, a number of students may move into the district all of a sudden all at once that have an array of needs that we can't meet. So those are some of the kinds of things that tend to lead to people drawing from those accounts. But it really is backup. You, you, it's designed so that you spend your, your operating budget first. And it's, it's to kind of insure against those kinds of situations, which, you know, they do, they, they really happen. And so...
Yeah. Well, we had a town meeting once where we had to, oh.
Exactly that kind of situation.
So that's, yeah, I'm in full support. Well, this was really great to open and see it. So well-balanced. Thank you. Go ahead.
Jane already asked some of my questions, but I'm, I'm curious. I feel like this is a little bit of our budget in a nutshell. Because, you know, I look at this, the sped and the transportation, you know, these are the things we can control. But technology is something we can control to some degree. And I'm curious about that number because that's a high number that we didn't spend.
I can speak to that. One of the strategies that the techn-
One of the strategies that the technology department has used consistently is to try and purchase items off the typical school purchasing cycle in order to, it's basically to take advantage of the fire sale phenomenon. So there, there's kind of a typical school cycle we'll purchase in the late summer, early fall, or kind of in, in that time of year. And what John has done is kind of used this off-time-of-year to try and spend down. So he's got a, a number of POs teed up right now that we've put through, hopefully, in, in a moment where we're going to capitalize on some decent pricing, in case there's any other impacts from trade wars or things like that. So that, that's been the strategy in the past. And that's why that number looks higher than you would expect, but it's, it's not going to stay that way for long.
So that means there is a good, good chance we're going to end up with a deficit at the end of the fourth quarter?
Department?
I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna go shopping, the technology, you know, the budget that, that John has is, is still much higher than the, than the surplus that we have right now.
Yeah, so, so if we were to go shopping, then that would be offset by a surplus somewhere else within these line items.
Again, circuit breakers not, not reflected here. So we have, there's some buffer in the circuit breaker account to handle the overage in special ed and some of the transportation, too. So right now, I mean, the, one of the things Anita and her team does religiously is they track out, like, payroll cycle to payroll cycle, exactly where we are and exactly where we're projected to land, based on the POs and all that. So we, we meet, and she's like, here's where it is, and here's where I'm going to make sure we're covered. So I think we're in great shape. It's just that, you know, I, I appreciate their work. It's a little bit like, I think about that analogy of, you know, you ever see fighter pilots land a plane on an aircraft carrier? It takes like a certain amount of precision. That's kind of the job that they do. It's remarkable, so.
All right, well, thank you.
I just have one question, similar to Yakub's questions regarding technologies. I'm just curious if you could speak a little bit more to the, the facilities line item, and just why we see such a large surplus there?
So there won't be a surplus at the end of the year, because that's just how much we have through the end of the third quarter. So most of that money will be expended within the fourth quarter.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. So if, before we do... Yeah, yeah. So before we do, I know we have to recognize Reagan today, it's a big day. I know it's her last meeting, but I figured let's just finish up and take care of the superintendent's review. If you can explain to everyone how that's going to go, and then we can finish up and...
Something fun at the end?
Yeah, yeah.
Why not? That would be nice for me.
Thank you. Dana, can we go back to my slides? So I, I kind of just put together a few slides based on what my understanding of, is of kind of how things have worked in the past.
It's going to take one second, because I don't have it linked to this document, so I'm going to turn the screen off and then bring it up. Sorry.
No worries. It's not like it's anxiety-provoking for me at all.
Sorry to add.
It's okay.
This is where you are, right? Right?
What was it?
That which one?
Yeah, yeah. I think, exactly. So I'll share, share this slideshow out with you. I think I did already, so that you have this data there, but I'm going to give you kind of a more useful iteration of a document to, to work with. But just as a reminder, superintendents are evaluated according to a process that's laid out by the state. The Department of Education establishes these performance standards in four different buckets. There's, you know, first and foremost, instructional leadership, like, what is a superintendent doing to improve teaching and learning in a school system? So that's, that's sort of bucket number one. The next slide is on management and operations, just, you know, it's the keeping the trains running on time, making sure everything is happening the way it should in terms of the budget and those types of processes that make a school system work behind the scenes. The third is on family and community engagement. It really does, in fact, take a whole community to run a school system and to have a school system be vibrant. And so that sort of family and community engagement part's really important. And then finally, the fourth bucket is around professional culture. And I, I think, honestly, I think of this bucket as the thing that differentiates sort of districts that are solid from those that are extraordinary, right? If you can sort of build and maintain a professional culture that's about excellence, and it's about learning, and it's about kind of doing everything we can on behalf of children, then this, this piece is really important, too. So, so those are the big, the big broad buckets, and there are a lot of little indicators in there. And in general, the way the process works is there's a rating scale, and you all have to kind of evaluate me using a rating scale versus these four buckets. And I think the next slide has what the scale looks like. I will say it's important to note that exemplary is a very, very high bar intentionally. It's really designed to acknowledge superintendents who are not just doing the job, but actually doing the job in the way that they could teach other people to do the job. So it would not be my expectation to be in that bucket early on in my career. That's, that's not a reasonable thing, and I get that. The proficient bar is really high in this rating scale and in these indicators. If you look at it, it's, you know, this is a big job, and, and doing it competently is, is a great thing, and doing it really well is an even better thing. That's definitely what I'm aspiring to, but I'm clear-eyed about where I am in my career. Needs improvement is really just designed to show, this is a thing, an area of growth, something you need to work on in this sort of broad bucket. And then unsatisfactory is, you know, a clear indication that there is kind of dire work to be done, right? It's a pretty typical kind of rating scale. Next slide is kind of my understanding, and I'm just reflecting this back to you based on what I've seen from the past, had some conversation with Sarah, that my, my job first is to share with you an end-of-year reflection, including links to my goals and the district strategic plan end-of-year report, which will be out by the end of the month. And my proposed deadline for that would be early in June. And then that would give you a little bit of time to look at that and then do ratings and comments. The way this is done in the past was a Google form was created, and I assume Sarah or her designee, somebody would be the editor on the backend, so I would turn over ownership to you, so I don't have to see the data coming in. And so it would go to one person, that person would sort of compile it, and whatever process you all would want to use to share and refine and revise, and then, and draft that report. And that comes back to me in public session the last meeting of the year, so. Makes for a fun final meeting, I think. I, I'll say this to everyone. I mean, I, I think that I am a person who values feedback tremendously. I think it's an important part of the growth process. It's something that, kind of openness to feedback is something that I would want to model for everyone within the district. And so I do appreciate your investment of time and energy in this, in this process, and, and thank you in advance for that, because I think it's helpful. If I'm going to get better at the job, I need to kind of hear about where those places are. I have my own ideas, and you'll read about those in the reflection, but, but hearing your perspectives is incredibly valuable. You're out in the community and the representatives of the community, so thank you for that. I think that's it.
Thank you for that overview. So basically, what will happen is we'll get by Monday, June 2nd, which is the deadline she set for her providing the end-of-year report, and then we'll, you'll basically have those four days. I'm going to try and see if we can get it a little earlier than June 2nd, it would be great, but, you know, I know that it's a busy time. And then, you know, I'll send out the surveys, et cetera, so that we can have everybody submit them by the 6th, and then I'll have them compiled together for our next school committee meeting, okay? So thank you for that overview. I'm going to put the best for the last. So first, I'm gonna, well, I guess we have so many things we have to cover still. I see that there's no one here, so, for citizens' request. Do, and then let's do school committee reports. I'll, we'll do the approval of minutes, and very last, we will recognize our student representative. So let's do our school committee reports. Jane?
The only thing I have to report is that I've heard from a number of people in the community how happy they were to get your entry findings, the draft of the entry findings, and excited about reading them, and so that's great. So thank you for sharing those.
Thank you. No, I, and I've received some great feedback, some of it reinforcing some things that are already there, so that's helpful to know, and some things that sort of put a different spin on something or gave me another piece to think about. So those, that feedback, you know, especially anything that I hear on multiple touchpoints will be reflected in the final report, so.
Yakub?
I have two things to talk about. So first of all, under the Hastings ADA Subcommittee, I, I met with, with Kelly and with Julia last week, and they walked me through, through the, through the building, and I saw the mock, mock room that, that looks like the target for the other rooms at Hastings. It looks a lot cleaner, it looks a lot better. Although it's unfortunate that the ADA project only covers, you know, I mean, it, it covers what's required by ADA, there's, there's a lot more that could be improved at Hastings. And one thing in particular, we, I asked to, to look at the playground, and it's in dire need of, of change. They are essentially reducing the functionality of the playground because they can't fix it, so they're, they're removing pieces. Like, one example is that there is a zip line, like they have in Milpon, they just removed it. They did ask about repair costs, and they were excessive. And, and so I, I encourage members of the community to, to make a trip and look at this playground for themselves. I hope the town considers supporting this project in the, in the near future. I think Hastings really needs this. And, you know, we don't really have other schools east of, of downtown, so this could, this playground could potentially serve, you know, a larger community in that area of town. So that's one. And the other one, I just want to echo what Allison mentioned at the beginning, that I did attend the art show yesterday as well. I think it was fantastic. I, I'd like to appreciate, say thank you to the students that were there to perform live music. It was, it was a wonderful atmosphere, the artwork was amazing, the whole exhibit was really, really fun. I, I almost wish we had more room and more time. It was a really spectacular thing to see. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim?
Nothing to report tonight, but, thank you.
Reagan?
I don't have much to report tonight. As we know, it's my last meeting, so I just wanted to say thank you for all of you and for the opportunity to serve on this board. It's been such an amazing opportunity to get to learn from all of you, and it's so unique that I got to be here. I just also want to say that I have a newfound appreciation, getting to know all the behind-the-scenes work, all that you guys do for our community and our schools. And I just want to say that whoever gets to do this job next year, I hope they love it as much as I do, so, thank you.
Thank you. So Reagan, I just want to thank you for coming and being part of our group. It's been such a pleasure to have you. All of your updates have been great, and we're really excited for you to go off to Villanova. I know that's going to be extremely exciting. Your mom must be so proud. So we're really looking forward to hearing about the wonderful things that you do. I know that we have something here for you from the school committee and from the superintendent and all. You can, we could present it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Thank you so much. We want you to pry this open, though, because, yeah, we want you to open it, because it's important.
It's very thoughtful, actually.
There are, there are parts to it, and I think we made it hard to open, so I apologize for that.
I'll try not to.
It's kind of representing where you're from and where you're going, and
Sugar shock.
We heard that you are headed to Villanova, which is super exciting. And that's where the Pope Point is schooled.
Yes, it turns out, which is really exciting. All right.
Thank you.
This is a magnet for the car, you know, or whatever, refrigerator, dorm, dorm refrigerator, whatever.
Oh, that's so cute, Westboro.
We want you to remember us.
Of course. That is so awesome.
We had to do some, you know.
That is so cute.
Ms. McDermott gave us advice on fashion, so we should thank her for any fashion choices.
Congratulations.
Thank you so much. And I do want to say Reagan's this kid who, you know, met her here, and then everywhere I go, I see her. She's like involved in everything. It's really remarkable. And so, I kind of, it feels for me, like, my first year in, in Westboro, you were kind of representing this version of a student that's just committed and involved and excited and, like, supportive of your peers, and so it's, you're representing this place so well. And I know you're going to do the same thing when you go off to college.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you so much, again. So in terms of my update, I had a meeting, actually, with Pete Duncan Beck, who's the head of Sustainable Westboro, just, what, the other day? Was it yesterday? It was a very nice meeting. I just wanted to update the committee about it. I think that one of the things that I would like to see happen, and I'm sure other committee members as well, is I think there needs to be, like, a renewed commitment in, amongst us just to evaluate the opportunities that we have, as well as try and make more of a commitment to understand how we can help. I think that, you know, part of the, I think there's been a bit of a breakdown of communication amongst some of the committees, and specifically with Sustainable Westboro, and I'd really like to see us bridge that gap. I think that, I did ask him, I said, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, Allison has met with him as well, if he could come and sort of in a layman's terms, give us, start again, lay the foundation in terms of what the goals are and what they are in relation to the strategic plan for our town, and also our strategic plan. I think that it's really important. I, I would like to hear more. I think that we, we have our subcommittee representative and liaison, but I think that it's not as widely discussed amongst all of the members as it should be, so that we have a real understanding of what the needs are in our community and how we can help. So I think that we also need to understand, you know, while I acknowledge that, and I, and I also agree that there's going to be certain things that we will not be able to do, I mean, when it comes to where we're in a crunch budget-wise or otherwise, but I do think that if we are able to make the commitment to look at options every single time and keep that in the back of our head, I think that's only best for the future of our town and for our schools. So I did invite him. I said, you know, please come back, come at some point, I don't know when, he's going to be able to arrange to do that, but if he could come and give us a presentation, all of us, as to what the goals are and how we can help, that would be great. So I don't know if anybody wants to add anything to that, because I have not been very involved with Sustainable Westboro. I know that Yakub, you've been our representative, and now Tim is, but I just wanted to share that we had a successful meeting, and I'm hoping that we're able to talk more widely about it. That's my update.
Can I say one thing to Reagan before?
Oh, yeah, please.
So I, I'm new to this committee, but not to Reagan at all, because we, when we first moved to Westboro, grew up, she was living across the street. And so just one thing I want to tell you in public, on, on, on TV, is, you know, I know your peers watch you and look up to you, but you have this whole generation of younger kids that are also looking up to you. And in our house, you know, you were a dancer, and my daughter was then a dancer, and she'd say, oh, let's go ask Reagan what to do. And, and even just a couple weeks ago, she got your number and texted you, asking, you know, something about the high school. And it's just really cool that you make this younger generation feel comfortable talking to you. and going to you for advice. So that's something I have appreciated as a mom. And it wasn't a surprise to me to see you as a student representative. But we appreciate your work so much. And I know, you know, as you go on to college and you're the upperclassman, you'll keep doing that. So thank you so much and, you know, from our whole family and our community.
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Thank you. If nobody else has any other comments, I think the only thing left, did you want to make comment?
I just want to say thank you, Reagan, for all the time that you devoted to the committee. And I liked a lot that you brought perspective from all schools. And you talked about the events from all schools. I thought that was very nice because in the past, we all, well, that I've seen, it was a bit from the high school primarily. And some members would fill in with the events from the other schools. So I hope that tradition continues after you. And good luck in the next stage. Thank you.
And now, have you ever missed a fight in? Also, thank you, Reagan, just for, for all your time and efforts here on the school committee. It's been a pleasure to serve with you here and good luck to you with just all your future endeavors. So, thank you.
So I guess that leaves us just with the approval of minutes for 418 and 430. If somebody wants to make a motion?
I will move to approve the minutes of April 18th and April 30th.
Do you have a second? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? That's four zero zero. Thank you. So somebody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Did we, did we approve the stipend memo?
We did.
You did, okay. Sorry, I'm...
No, that's okay. I know, sorry, I was jumping around in this agenda today.
No, it's fine, it's fine.
But it just was like making sense, so I was going with it, but sorry.
It's May, my brain is starting to...
No, I hear you. Anyone want to make a...
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
On, any discussion? Want to discuss? No. Okay, all in favor? Four zero zero. Thank you.